Hi, everybody. We're getting ready to start. So if you could all just look cool at me up here, that'd be fantastic. Thank you. So hello and welcome, everybody, to the School Committee Candidates Nonpartisan Forum. Yay! Thanks for coming. My name is Caitlin Martin. I'm a member of the We the People class of 2022-2023. I'm joined with me by some of my fellow students. We have Caitlin Damon, Alex Major, and Landon Ellsworth. Yay! There are also some other students who will be coming and joining us later on in the program. But we would like to thank all candidates for taking time out of their schedules to be here with us today. We also want to thank the East Hampton Democratic Committee of Jackie Russo-Hera, Sarah Amoroso, Constance Dawson, Steve Baxter-Chandler, and Jonathan Smith for hosting and organizing this event. Sean Sheehan, President of the East Hampton Education Association, also helped to co-host and plan this event. We also want to thank East Hampton Media for helping us to provide a hybrid option for those who cannot attend. Please visit and support the East Hampton High School Student Government Table Fundraiser, Breast Cancer Awareness, and the World Language Club Calendar Reference to offset the costs with this year's branch trips, tables up there when you walked in. We also have some volunteers here working for the MTA conducting a petition, a petition drive to get referendum question to remove the MCAS as graduation requirement. We're joined here today by nine out of the ten committee candidates. Yes, candidates. So we are joined by our two incumbent candidates, Megan Harvey and Ben Hershey. We have two acting candidates, Sam Hunter and Laura Scott. And then for our new candidates, we have Eric Gaiet, Linda Broadhurst, Tim St. John, Ray Sliz, and Linda Markey. Patricia Cavalli is also running, but she was unable to join us here today. Oh, I'm also reading that. Sorry, sorry. So here is a job description of what a school committee member would do. So school committee members not only oversee the finances of the school district, but they also make sure that the policy is being put in place to increase the effectiveness of the organization to comply with the regulations. They were closely with the superintendent. Massachusetts general laws give the school committee the power to select and determine the superintendent, approve budgets, and establish educational goals and policies for the schools and the district consistent with the requirements of the law and statewide goals and standards established in the Board of Education. We would also hope that a school committee member would work closely with the schools, the school community, as well as the students.
We will start by allowing the candidates to introduce themselves briefly by answering two questions in three minutes. First, please tell us your name and what skills slash experiences you have that make you feel qualified to serve on a St. Hampton school committee. Second, what are your opinions of the St. Hampton Public Schools, the educators, and the students?
Okay, we're gonna... We have, um... Mr. Sheehan has the timer, I think. You have a timer. We have a timer right here, so we're just gonna go in order of... We're just gonna go in order. So I'm gonna start with the incoming candidates. We have Megan Harvey. Laura's yours.
All right. Hi, thank you so much for hosting and having us be here today. Is that... Oh, you're my timer. Okay. So I'm Megan Harvey, a current member of the East Hampton School Committee, and I'm running for another term. I joined the school committee initially, you know, well, got involved in the school committee probably three or four years ago. And this stems from my kids being part of the district and also this deep passion that I have for public education. It runs in my family. My mom was a school teacher for thirty-five-plus years. My brother's a school teacher. I teach at the college level. And I just really passionately believe that every child deserves to be able to go to school in a place where they feel seen and accepted and valued and supported. And when they're there and they feel that way, then they can do the job of learning and finding out who they really are. And that's how we help children grow to be adults who are self-sufficient, problem-solving, who are active members of their communities. I'm really passionate about that. To answer the couple of questions that we proposed. The first question is about skills and qualifications. Clearly, as someone who's been on the school committee, I have some background knowledge at this point about how the school committee operates and being able to hit the ground running. But the other thing that I wanted to point to is that I have developed this sense of understanding of what my core values are and understanding of how they align with the core values of our district, which we are lucky enough to have a record of after having just gone through the process of sort of visioning for our district. And the other piece of that that I think is really important is the idea that I know I don't know everything. When I don't know an answer to something, I'm gonna ask questions. I'm probably gonna ask multiple times. I'm gonna make sure it comes up in public meetings so that we can all hear the answer to it. And that's that idea that we're gonna learn together and then come to a solution that's for the best interest of the kids. That's really what I think brings me to this. And what do I think about our district and our educators and our students? I need way more than three minutes to talk about that. So I would love to talk about any of these things and more when I arrive to your tables and we get a chance to chat. I love our district. I'm so happy to be raising my children in this district because one of the things I think is so special about it is the way the community continues to show up and invest. And I don't just mean invest by voting yes and building new school buildings. I mean by showing up to forums like this, to public meetings, to city council meetings, to school committee meetings, voicing support, and also loudly voicing dissent and concern. That is so important. We have come so far by being able to do that. Our educators are truly special people. And the, you know, I love educators in my family. I know how much they go through and that they put into their jobs. I feel like my job as a school committee member is how do I support them so they can do what they do? They're experts. They have the knowledge. They just need support and respect, and then they're able to do their jobs. And I am at time. I also love our kids here raising.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, we're gonna do our second incumbent candidate, Ben Hershey.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for organizing this. It's really great to actually see people and to get the chance to sit down with you and talk to you about actual issues in real life. So to try to get to these two questions in three minutes is a big one. The question of experience and qualifications, I could get into. I have worked in public education for the better part of twenty-five years. For a number of years, I was a substitute teacher. I've worked as a paraprofessional. I've worked as a professional writing tutor. I've been an after-school coordinator. I've been in public schools for a long time. And then for the last fifteen years, I've worked as an English faculty member at Holyoke Community College. So I'd have a real interesting vantage point from what it looks like to be in a school like this or what it looks like to be in the aftermath, to see kids who are just coming out of public school and to get a feel for like the things that they're learning and not learning and all that. So my life has been dedicated to public education. It feels like one of the core ingredients of our society that ties us together. And I've, you know, I'll get concerned about the state of public education. It feels like there are forces that are trying to kind of pull it down a little bit. And one of my reasons for doing this is that I want to be in support of and a fighter for your kids, our kids, and this community, which I am deeply grateful to be a part of. The question is, what do I think about our schools and our, you know, our teachers and our kids? My experience, I have a fifth grader in Mountain View right now, and I have to say that like it's been a remarkable six-year journey. We started in kindergarten in Maple. And, you know, traveling through COVID, which all of us know about, but like getting the first hand look at like the way my son's teachers navigated that really treacherous time was incredibly powerful. And I feel enormously grateful all the time for the work that goes into the daily experiences of our children. Thank you. So as an educator myself, I know about the tireless, endless, hard work that goes into the daily experience in the school. And it's one of my goals to make sure that I can be there for teachers, I can be there for families and parents. I've worked closely with activated parents over the course of the last six years. It's a great joy, and I feel humbled that people open up to me and share their stories with me. I'm a hundred percent invested in this in the name of learning how to do it because it is incredibly complicated job. But I'm here for y'all, and however I can be there for your kids, please reach out. It'd be a great pleasure to talk to you. Thank you.
We're gonna move on to our two acting candidates. So first off, we have Sam Hunter.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sam Hunter. I have lived in East Hampton for about a decade. I did previously serve on the school committee a few years ago, prior to COVID. And I have a seven-year-old who attends Mountain View. I... My career... I'm trying to think of like the best way to answer both of these questions at once. My career is in public policy and social work and education. Those are kind of the three areas that I've worked in professionally. I currently coordinate a family support program for children with developmental disabilities who are at risk of residential placement. I do that through my job at the Department of Developmental Services. So I've worked with a lot of school districts all across Central and Western Mass. And I am always really blown away by just how special East Hampton is and how lucky we are to be here. I wouldn't want my kid to go anywhere else. And, you know, he had like, we have, you know, he has some special needs of his own. It has been challenging at times to get those needs met, but I've always felt so supported by the community here. And I want to make sure everybody feels that way because like I have a master's degree and I do this for a living. So it's very easy for me to say, my kid's having a great experience, you know, everything is going awesome. I know that's not true for everybody, so I want people... I really like it when people reach out to me and talk to me about challenges that they're having. Parents in this community are such good advocates for their kids, and they're so proactive about that. I've had some amazing conversations with families in the short period that I was appointed back onto the school committee again. And I love it. I really love just hearing about how things are going. I'm also a transgender parent of a child with a disability, and so my family, we often go places and participate in things where we don't necessarily feel completely welcome or where it just feels a little bit odd. And I've never gotten that feeling in East Hampton. I've always felt like I love how like so many other families here are like my family, that my son is growing up with other kids growing up in families like ours and having that validated and it real for them. So I love, you know, I'm really excited about continuing to be a part of making sure our schools are safe places for diverse families, families who come from different places and have different backgrounds. And I also just like love everybody who works in these schools, every teacher I've ever talked to, every paraprofessional I've ever talked to, like we've... I am just blown away by everybody's expertise and just real considerate approach to this work. So I always say like I will not pass a policy without talking to people directly affected by it. I'm looking forward to speaking with more students as well. And I'm really happy to be here today, and I'm looking forward to talking with all of you. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to our second acting candidate, Laura Scott.
Thank you. You were hot on that mic dance, and I tried to look quiet.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Laura Scott. Again, we're all gonna complain that three minutes is a really short amount of time to address two kind of large overarching issues. I'm gonna answer them in reverse. My opinion of our district, its faculty, its staff, its students, I'm continually astounded. That's my opinion. My family has two students in East Hampton. They've been here since they were preschool-aged babies. So we started at the Maple Pre-K. They went all the way up through Maple. They were at the illustrious White Brook campus, and I now have one at Mountain View and one in the high school. One of our kids required an IEP till he was age ten. The other was neurotypical, but needed a lot of additional emotional support through COVID. And what I witnessed with the faculty and teachers, the support they were able to give our kids, changed their lives and made my life a lot easier because I can focus on the things that I can as a parent that I couldn't necessarily as an education expert. They went above and beyond. They continue to do so. We were here for open house at the high school the other night. And it's college-level academics instructing your students at East Hampton High School. They're thoughtful. They're sensitive. They're intelligent. You get the full package. So I can't say enough nice things about our students, our faculty, our staff. And I'm sure we'll talk about that more one-on-one at the tables. Regarding my qualifications, I did serve back in the day. I served two terms beginning back around 2013. I was originally appointed for a vacancy many, many years ago, then ran again and served another term. I approached this work by pulling from my old background in public education. Before my kids were born, I was a public school teacher. And I also try to approach it with a sense of balance. I think the work is more specific and requires a level of expertise that maybe isn't fully understood by everyone in the public. It's useful to be a school committee member, to hear everyone's concerns, and to be a filter through which that happens. But I also think it's useful to explain to the community how much our focus has to remain on finance and policy. Those are the ways by which we support our faculty, our staff, and our students. That said, I do have some nice ideas about frosting that I think we can add to the district. I think everybody has pep projects they're excited about. I think we've crossed a lot of great hurdles in the past few years with our buildings, our fantastic faculty. So I look forward to working in collaboration to bring even more incredible agenda to our district in the coming years. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Laura. All right, moving on to our new candidate. First off, we have Eric Gaiet.
Hi, I'm Eric Gaiet. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Thanks for putting this whole thing together. So first, to speak on my qualifications, I'm in my sixteenth year as a school teacher, having taught fourth grade, fifth grade, and I'm currently in sixth grade. I taught in a small district, Halffield, where we had at times twenty-four sixth graders in the whole district, to where I am now, Westfield, where we have four hundred-plus sixth graders in the district and twenty-plus teachers for those classrooms. I've been successful in both settings, primarily because my main objective as a teacher is to teach the children not just as students, but as complete people. I'm a big believer, I have students in my class currently that can read at a ninth-grade level, and I have students in my class that cannot read. And I know that all my students leave that room every day realizing that everybody in that room is valuable, everyone's important, and everyone has a role to play. I'm also active in youth sports, having just coached my daughter's game in Agawam, which was a perfect example for today because we were down three-nothing at halftime. And instead of looking and being sorrowful and worried, we said, listen, we're doing great. You're playing great. Keep supporting each other. Keep playing as a team, and we'll be fine. And we ended up tying four to four at the end, which they were thrilled about. As far as how I feel about East Hampton schools, I love being in East Hampton. I'm proud to send my kids to school every day. I've met many of the professionals in our district through open houses, through being able to volunteer at the awesome field days that they put together. And I know that they're like me. They're passionate about helping kids. So I would be looking to help them serve those children and give them as much space as they need. I know classroom teachers get added things to do every year, do this, do this. And sometimes it's challenging to get through everything, but if we allow them the tools... I know we have social emotional programs like Second Step. If we allow to pay attention to what are working and what's helping the classroom teachers, then they can help the students. I truly believe that if they're able to do that, then they can show these kids. I try to preach in my class that it's not just about the content. The content we teach kids is really just a vehicle. And the real reason we're teaching them is how to be people, how to be parts of a community, how to help each other, how to support each other. So when we are able to use that content and teach them that, they become valuable members of our community, and they learn that everyone around them can help them if they help those people. So those are my answers, and thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Eric. Moving on to our next candidate, Linda Broadhurst.
Hello, everyone. I'm Linda Broadhurst. I've been a resident in East Hampton for over twenty-five years. I'm married to my husband, who's a lifelong resident of East Hampton. I've had four children that I've raised, three who have gone through the whole East Hampton system. I work in customer service. I've done it for over thirty years. And I think customer service gives you the ability to learn how to listen to everybody before forming an answer or a decision. So I pride myself on that. I also do quite a bit of volunteer work. I do a lot... I belong to a religious community and where I teach Sunday School. I help out with that. I've done the Child Care Weekly for years there. I volunteer. I feed the homeless with my coworkers. I've also gone with my family on holidays, and we've done that. One of my biggest passions is supporting and making awareness and fundraising for ALS, commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease. How do I feel about the schools? I think the schools are wonderful. I think we've got a beautiful new pre-K through eighth-grade school, and this high school is barely ten years old. We've got the buildings and the teachers. I think they give a hundred percent. I'm proud of them. I think, you know, if they're given the tools that they need, they're gonna do the job that we, as parents, would want to see. Sorry, I hadn't written a speech. What else? Students from our pre-K to our graduating seniors. I think we have the greatest and most unique students here, and I think we should support them. We need to listen to our community, our students, our parents, the teachers. It's a whole gamut. Everybody needs to be heard. Everybody needs their opinion listened to. And we need to, as Laura said, follow policies and do what we can. But another thing is being trans-parent. I want us to make sure that you know where we're headed, what we're doing, and that anytime, you know, contact any of us, ask what you want, whether you think it's appropriate. Just please speak to us. That's what we're here for. Sorry. I don't pretend to have all the answers to all the challenges that East Hampton schools are facing, but I do have an eagerness and I want to learn about the challenges, possible solutions, and take action based on thoughtful and informed decision-makings. And last, if I could say, as Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Intelligent plus character." That is the goal of true education. Thank you for your time.
For our next candidate, we have Tim St. John.
Hi, my name is Tim St. John. And so you always think that you'll know what you're gonna say when you get into a situation like this. As I've been preparing throughout whatever the past couple weeks, knowing that this was coming up, I've had a million different approaches, so we'll see which one comes out in the end. As far as qualifications go, I spent five years working as a behavior management specialist at Brightside for schools, I mean, sorry, Brightside for families and children. That provided me with a lot of insight on... So I worked on developing behavior modification systems. So what you learn there is what it's like to have the best intentions, but then see that get lost in translation and see that get lost in application. Very interested in how things work. My current work is a real estate sales agent and also a Medicare Advantage rep in training. I'm very interested in the language of things and what makes things work and the rules and the guidelines. And I think that that would translate really well to a school committee member. Also, so what do we think of our school and our teachers? Our lives have been supported and forever changed by our experiences with our teachers. We were Maple Street family, and we went through, our family went through some experiences that required, you know, us to get to know these teachers and this administration incredibly well. And they were a lifeline to us. And so, and I see these schools, and I'm sure every one of us has a story. Every one of us has a story that is similar to that. And what these schools and these teachers who are, when you call them these teachers, I mean, we just mean these people. And the support that we've all needed or that we've been able to provide for each other as a community. And that's what I believe we're here for, and that's the work that I want to be involved in doing, is generating more opportunities for all of us to be capable of supporting one another in this community. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Ray Sliz.
Thank you. Well, you all know who I am now. As far as my running for the school committee, I think there are three primary components that I think are particularly important. One, the students themselves, and I think in context to providing all the necessary resources that the students need to get a good foundation in education so they can step out into the world and be successful is very important. I think also we have to keep in mind while we're doing that that we need to exercise some fiscal restraint. Taxpayers don't have all the money in the world. And we have to, I think, create somewhat of a balance or try to create somewhat of a balance in that regard. The second group that I think is perhaps the most important aspect of the whole system is the faculty itself. I mean, we have a couple of very nice buildings, but they don't teach anything. If it wasn't for dedicated, committed teachers, then schools wouldn't be producing much of an education. And I think, you know, the school committee in setting policies, goals, and so on, should solicit input from the faculty. In my experience in a classroom and in a school, I've always felt that the teachers, more so than anyone else, kind of had their finger on the pulse of the school. And the third most important component to me are parents. You have a big investment in the schools, one from the standpoint of your children and two from the standpoint of your checkbook. And I think the school committee needs to keep an open door to listen to what parents have to say, to listen what their concerns are. As far as experience is concerned, I did teach for ten years at EHS. I taught social studies. I spent three years also as the chair of the department. Was the athletic director, coached teams, and so on. Admittedly, that was a while back, and of course, Joy and Jeff will not tell you what years that was. So I have certainly some experience as far as education is concerned. The reason I left, frankly, was in the ten years I was at the school, there were four different principals, and things were Ted but disorganized. So I decided to do something else, and something else became law enforcement. And I spent twenty-eight years with the police department, retired as the chief of police. As the chief, of course, were responsible for formulating, implementing, managing the budget. I'm also very familiar with hiring, firing, disciplinary processes, and so on. And I've only got thirty seconds left. As far as my opinions about the school, they primarily come from teachers, coaches, and kids who are asking me for money. I've met a number of students and teachers and coaches by the Pegel Shop and McGee's and whatnot looking to find me on some sort of a project. I think it's great. The teachers are committed to be out there with the kids. The kids were great. You know, articulate and great.
And we're about to hear from our last candidate, Linda Markey.
Hi, I'm Linda Markey, and I... My candidacy, first of all, thank you for hosting us. This is great. And I'm... My candidacy is fueled by my passion for education. And also, I love East Hampton. This is a great community, and I'd like to give back to this community. I first became a member or a part of this community a few ten years ago or so when my daughter Alicia, married by a sudden my daughter Alicia, married by son-in-law Aldo, and I got a bonus grandson, my Alex. And then, where he rose to come, my son Nathan, my granddaughter Julianne, and I moved to East Hampton. We love it here. I think it's vibrant. I think it's welcoming. And it's just one of the favorite places I've ever lived. And so, the first time that I walked into an East Hampton school was when little Alex started kindergarten in Maple. Through the years, I walked through and navigated the halls of Whitebrook Middle School with Alex and Julianne. And we also navigated through COVID. Together, we went through online learning. During that time, I met so many innovative, kind, dedicated teachers and administrators. And I deeply respect them. I respect them for what they do every day for the children in our community. As far as the students, I met a lot of Alex and Julianne's friends. Actually, I know one. I've met over here from cross-country. And, you know, I have a lot. I'm kind of amazed by their resilience. I think resilience is how I think of these students. They had to learn in ways and places that most of us could not even have comprehended a few short years ago. I see them now, and each one that I've met, and I mean this sincerely, each one that I met, they're engaged. They want to have new ways of learning. They want, they're excited about new ways of seeing the world. And they're excited about new ways of understanding each other, accepting each other, being an community. And I, I am a firm believer, oh my gosh, I'm talking too slow. Anyhow, I was a teacher, a manager. I run two small businesses here. I have a lot of experience doing those things. But most of all, I think it's my dedication, my integrity, my passion that will not enable me to be a strong advocate. And I promise that I will listen to every one of you and bring those ideas back, as I hope, by fellow school committee members.
All right. So we're gonna be doing all the questions through the Zoom chat here. And we have a few that are prepared that we're gonna ask everybody. So what are one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address over the next twenty-one months? And what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
So if I, just to make sure I heard correctly, it's the three things that we're going to need to address over the next twenty-one months? And then what, what am I bringing to address them? Okay. Sorry, it's a little bit hard to hear in here. So I'm Sam Hunter. And in terms of the next twenty-one months, I think that's a good, actually, that's a good timeframe to think about. We have a superintendent search, which I would argue is probably the most important thing that we have to work on right now, which means we're gonna have to convene a committee pretty soon, probably by about January, I'd hope. So we're gonna need to put together a committee of folks from the community who would like to participate. We're gonna have to put out a call for applicants. This is, we're gonna be working with MASC to do this. I'm really hoping to hire a consultant. I think that's gonna make it a little bit smoother this time. And we have to come up with a good process. So that's, I think, the most important thing that we're gonna be working on. The second most important thing, which is gonna unfortunately kind of happen around the same time in the spring, is we're going to have a tighter budget this year. And this is just kind of well-known in state, in the state right now generally. It's because a lot of the COVID money is going away, the ARPA money, that, that's all over. There's some changing forces happening. So we may end up with, with a smaller budget than we would like, or like maybe not quite as robust a state budget as we expected. So we're gonna have to deal with that in the springtime, which is gonna mean some, like, complex conversations that I think we're gonna really want to involve the public in, because really, like, what we spend our money on is the best expression of our values as a community. So I'm looking forward to getting a lot of feedback on that. And then I would think the third thing would just be continuing to kind of respond to thoughtfully, kind of the changing climate of education right now. There's a lot of pressure on kids to perform at like a very high level, kind of throughout their educational experience. There's a lot of like good questions being asked about the types of standardized testing that we do, and whether that's something that we really want to focus so many of our resources on. And just kind of what are the changing needs of a 21st century education? One of the ways that we've already responded to this is with our beautiful school buildings, obviously. But we also have a lot of other work to do, just around making sure that our, our kids are graduating ready for the world that they're graduating into. So I think that is kind of the third biggest issue and kind of the, probably for more than twenty-one months, I'd imagine. And in terms of my, the things that I bring to address those issues, like I said, I have a background in public policy and in special education in particular. I'm also the parent of a child in the district, so it's easier. I found, when I was last on school committee, I didn't have a child in the district. I do now. And it's, it's much easier for me to kind of make those connections with people in the district now, just because I, I'm at school more often. I'm talking more with the principals anyway. I also am the co-chair of the Special Education PAC Can Do. And so through Can Do, I've been meeting a lot of people and talking with more folks in the district. And so I think just that kind of background that I have in public policy and special education, and then also my general extrovertedness and ability and interest in connecting with others, I'm hoping that that can kind of help, help us kind of get some people together to work on addressing these issues as a team. Because we've got to do it all as a team in the end.
Great, thank you. And you addressed some of the other questions I-
Okay, good.
Do you support the school library, school committee policy?
Yes, I do. So are you referring to like our actual policy?
The actual-
The actual policy. Yes, I do support the actual policy. And I want to make very clear kind of the difference, because there was just this discussion in city council about this issue. And they have written what I think is a pretty good statement about the importance of public libraries and school libraries remaining, places where people can encounter all sorts of different ideas without any kind of censorship, trusting the expertise of our librarians and their professional ethics as well, which don't permit any censorship. And I, one of the things I want to make very clear is that those types of, like those book banning bills that we hear about, or when we see other communities passing in our area, they're also, they're not in line with current MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committee. It's not in line with current MASC policy, like whatsoever. So we actually have to pass policies that are legal and that are, that follow MASC. So the policy that we have right now is completely legal. It follows the MASC. We're doing what we're supposed to be doing. If we were to pass a policy that said, you know, we're gonna censor books, or we're gonna make certain topics not available, we could actually get in a lot of legal trouble over that. And so those districts that are doing that are running that risk. So that's a risk that I don't find acceptable for a variety of reasons. The most obvious one being like, I think all of our students should be able to be exposed to lots of different ideas. And I think all of our students, especially students who maybe aren't as safe at home to learn more about themselves, like, I think they need to have a place where they can learn more about the world and themselves and their identity. And I think our school libraries are a great place for that. But also, we really need to pass policies that are legal and that aren't gonna get us in trouble. And so that's the other, the other thing I think that's important to emphasize. It's a little bit more boring, but it is, it is very important as well.
Great, thank you. And what do you know about current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our districts?
So we have our strategic plan, which is, it's available on our website. It's very easy to read. It's broken out into a rubric. It's a really, really good strategic plan. If you look at other districts, most districts don't actually have a strategic plan that's so dense and so easy to find. So like, we really, we really make a lot of decisions in our district right off of our strategic plan, which addresses how we are going to, or how we are working to ensure that students of different backgrounds are welcome, making sure that we have all of our materials going out, both in English and in Spanish, since Spanish is the second most spoken language in our district, ensuring that we have outlets for students for if they are experiencing conflict. And conflict is something that is gonna come up in any diverse environment. So we have places for students to go to kind of talk out how they're feeling, to work through disagreements. And we, I think another thing that's really important here is like making sure that our faculty feel, feel supported in the ways that they're dealing with these issues in their classrooms and among students, and also just how they, how they're deal, like faculty who might be coming in, maybe who have, who are not white necessarily, or who are not straight. I think like making sure that they also are getting the support that they need in a diverse workplace is really, really important. So all of this is outlined in our strategic plan. I think for the most part, we do a pretty good job with most of it. I think that we are a community of people. And so the downside of that is that we're a community of people, so mistakes happen. And one of the things that we can do is be really accountable for ways that we can do better next time. And I think that is one thing that I've always really appreciated about East Hampton.
Great, thank you. And you touched briefly on the budget. I think that's the time that I hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's-
I'm, I'm like a real big talker. I apologize.
I think they're gonna be switching tables, so I don't wanna say, but if you wanted to provide some closing comment-
Well, I guess my closing comment, because I see a lot of people on here who I actually, I've, I've encountered some of you before. Hold on. I don't, can you guys still hear me while they're talking? Maybe. If you guys want to reach out, feel free. I'm on Facebook. I'm on Facebook as, I'm trying to, trying to give them my info. I'm on Facebook as Sam Linell Hunter, and I'm easily reachable by my school email as well, shunter@epsd.us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Hello, Mr. Sheen.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. Just, um, Ben Hahn?
You got it.
So we have a few questions for you.
Okay.
We had a few questions that were given online. So what are the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address over the next twenty-one months? And what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
Well, the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address over the next twenty-one months? Okay, well, one of the discussions that I just had at one of the other tables was about social emotional learning. And I think that the continued application of social emotional learning is going to be a very important part of what we focus on, highlighting and funding the application of social emotional learning throughout, throughout our curriculum. So that would be one. Another would be community focus. And community focus, to me, means more accessible play areas and more open engagement with arts and, I'm sorry, with arts and music and theater, and school-based performances, so that the community is, is more, feels more engaged, feels more invited, and has more opportunity to be present and to communicate. And I think there are a lot of growth can be done there. And let's see. And a third, I guess, would be as we continue to develop in our digital world, that being aware of where our social interactions are happening and that they are healthy, making sure that they're healthy social interactions. So I mean, being aware of where bullying and where, you know, those types of interactions are, are happening. And they're happening more quietly and they're happening, happening, you know, in more, more secretly, I guess, is, is what I'm looking for. So I think that our awareness around our digital environment is going to be of continued and growing importance. What do I bring? What kind of unique perspectives do I bring? Well, I'll tell you, I'm involved in the community a lot, coaching both baseball and soccer in East Hampton. I spend a lot of time interfacing with the community. And I think that I get, I can get a lot of sense of the wellness and, and, you know, we have a lot of, I have a lot of conversations with family as well, with families as well. And, and their, all of their kind of diverse manifestations. So I think that that being accessible and, and available and communicating is one of the things that I uniquely bring to our, our community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Do you support the school library, school committee policy?
I support the school library, school committee policy. I do, as far as I believe that the, the school libraries are, I mean, they're essentially the informational heart of, of our schools. So I believe that they, that, yeah, absolutely, that they need to be managed and funded and, and, that's, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And what do you know about current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our districts?
I know that we are invested in equity and, and inclusion, and I, that we are working to always improve access through such organizations, like as the PTO and our engagement with the community centers. I know that we are all so, in, in my opinion, in, in every experience that I've had, we're, we are LGBTQIA+ positive. And we're always working to have an inclusive, sensitive, and aware culture in our schools.
And that, there's somebody online here that just wants you to clarify your stance on censorship in libraries. Could you do that?
Sure, I can do my best. I believe that we are, we have a structure for validating and acknowledging age-appropriate material. And I don't feel that there's, that there's any need, there are, if, if there's anything that's on an individual basis that needs to be looked at and reviewed, that that could be brought to any of the appropriate administration or any of the appropriate powers that be. And I think other than that, I feel like we're moving forward, you know, fairly, in, in a reasonable and fairly safe way.
And describe how the school committee- Sorry, I'm gonna unmute myself here. Describe how the school committee should balance providing equality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden.
Can you repeat the question?
Do you, describe how the school committee should balance providing equality education with the need to respond to a local taxpayer burden?
Well, I think, and we, we just had this discussion at the other table as well. You know, I think that moving forward with, with a level services budget, or beginning with a level services budget, that any kind of alterations that, that need to be made, I mean, we could, we can look at how they can be made creatively. We can be, we can look at how things can be adjusted and moved without increasing a tax burden. You know, I don't, I think that there was, there was a huge increase in the tax burden in, in creating the schools that we have. And I don't think that moving forward, we necessarily need to look for more funding necessarily. I mean, we will address those issues when we, when we come to them. But I don't necessarily think more funding, at least from the application of, of providing the education, you know, inside of our, our buildings at this point, is what we need to look, or is, is gonna be what we need to look at.
Thank you.
Jackson for me media. I heard you wanted to report, came to-
Oh, sure.
Did you want to do that? Megan Carr pushed out, so you didn't get a reply.
Oh, okay. No, I didn't get a reply. I mean, I, I would be out if something-
Yeah, yeah. Hey, boy, guess my.
Hi there.
Hey, send me an email.
All right. Just like this?
Yeah.
Good to go.
Well, you're gonna.
Good night.
It's Percy as well, right?
H E R S E Y, yeah, Percy.
Okay, the next candidate that will be joining us is Ben Hershey. He is a incumbent. So welcome, Ben. So we're gonna, we're gonna start off by saying.
Oh, I think you see.
Yeah.
Pretty call it right.
We'll edit this part out. Maybe. Be on the bloopers. All right, what are the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address over the next 21 months? And what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
Well, um, the first, the first big one is, uh, uh, the superintendent, the next superintendent. We, we will begin laying the groundwork for the, the, the search, which is a complex, multi-step process. So I'll be looking forward to those discussions. I learned a lot in the last year about how that goes and I'm looking forward to some, some exciting experiences around getting a new superintendent. That's one. The second one I think is, is always, always present is the budget, which is just around the corner. Budget season sort of starts early next year. And I'll be, I'll be curious to see kind of how the numbers play out, plus sort of the needs of the district as we get closer to that time. And then, so those are the two sort of big ones. I guess if we're beyond that, we'd be getting to stuff that I personally am interested in trying to do. I'm definitely trying to support the culture at Mountain View, which after a year under our, under, under us, the transition has happened. A gargantuan, massive task, which I know for a fact was not easy at times for people who work there. I'm really excited to see where we go next, how, how we can continue to synthesize the different kids from different parts of the city. I think that's something we could absolutely work on. And I'm, I'm really excited to, to, to find ways to try to build culture that is supportive, respectful. There's a lot of things around that. I know there's been some bullying concerns at Mountain View and I want to think about that. There's been some racial issues. I want to think, think about that. I don't, I don't, we, we have to have some conversations within the school committee, but also I would absolutely love to come to some schools and talk to people who are working there and kind of get a feel for what they, what they're concerned about, what they need, what they want. And, and we can, we can go from there, but, uh, yeah, the, uh, there's, the question was like, what experience and, and skills do I bring to these questions?
Yeah, what unique perspective and skills?
As far as the search committee goes, uh, I, uh, the search committee for the next superintendent, and not even just the search committee, just searching for, for the next superintendent, I, um, this is a long story, but like we, we, we went through a big, a big search last year, uh, for better and worse. And I learned quite a lot about how that works and I look forward to an opportunity to exercise skills around communication, around transparency, around connecting with more stakeholders about what's what. One of the big things I'm really looking forward to this year is slowing down. We, when it came to that, when it came to that search, we moved very fast and sometimes it, the, the need to go fast took over. And I, I look forward to having a, a more thoughtful kind of progression from step to step. I think my experience with that will be helpful. Uh, I could say more about that, but let me think about the budget. We have some fantastic people on the school committee right now. Yes, we'll have some new people there, but I think that the, we're, we all sort of communicate and we are connected. And I think a new team will be, will be right, ready to go. I'm excited to support. One thing I want to do is to get into the schools again, talk to teachers and try to find out what the needs are, what, whether that be curriculum needs or, you know, what are the, what are the things that are gonna be important for, for, for teachers? And, uh, and bring that to the table when it comes time to make budget decisions. One of my, one of my things is that as an educator, I'm a little bit biased toward teachers and am a big believer that teachers need to be, you know, given what they need. So I need to find a way to, for myself, balance the needs of the district financially, because every penny counts. But also I want to create a culture in this district where teachers feel they can build a career here. I've been a little concerned at, at a higher volume of turnover over the last maybe three to six months. And I want, I want people to feel like they can spend their lives working here. That's important to me. There's always more to say about this, so if you'd be to reach out, follow up, I'd be happy to talk more.
This is a great school district. Thank you. I've been here for 24 years, so you got me for like, pretty much.
Good, good.
Do you support the school libraries' school committee policy?
Yes, I do. I am 100% in favor of the school library and libraries in general. Is there, is there anything?
Like, how about with book banning? Cause that was also mentioned online here.
Sure, sure.
What are your opinions on that?
Yeah, as far as book banning goes, I am 100% against any kind of censorship or program that is gonna deny kids access to books. If anything, I want to make it possible for children to discover, uh, new possibilities in books. I, this is, this is a fantastic thing to talk about. I see this happening all over the country. There's this idea somehow that keeping different kinds of books away from kids is gonna somehow protect them. And I, I don't think that's true. I'm a big believer in the idea that it takes a village to, to raise a kid. And I think that if a kid stumbles into some, a book with complex material, well, that becomes the space for the family to then support that child and figuring out what's going on. But by the same token, we have this incredible community here, where we have educators in East Hampton. We have admin and people who are dedicated to the well-being of kids, who can help our children, um, you know, develop a, a new, a new sense of what is possible in books. I don't ever think we should be banning books. I think censorship is a mistake. A library should be a place for discovery and kids' days are dominated by schedules, you know, from, you know, the moment they wake up to the moment they go to bed, their whole day is accounted for. I don't think we should be trying to step into their imaginations and dominating the imagination as well. I want kids, kids the space to be free as, as much as possible and to figure out who they are on their treasures. So yeah, no book bans.
Great. What do you know about current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our districts?
Well, we do have an equity committee that I've been a part of for the last two years as a school committee member, but also previous to that, which is, I think, a little bit dormant right now and hopefully we'll get started again. Equity is a conversation that relates to every aspect of education and I want to support that as well.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. Yep.
So it's Linda Markey or?
Anya.
Have you put your best? And your Bria New, Kevin, one just more.
No, I don't.
So I'm gonna introduce you to the, I'm gonna introduce you to the crowd here on camera there.
Okay.
And so this is Linda Markey. She is a new running member of the school committee. And we're gonna ask her a few questions. So to start, what are the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address over the next 21 months? And then what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
Okay, three issues in 21 months?
Yes.
Well, I think that we are continuing to have a, um, need to always look at budget concerns. Budget is always gonna be a concern for any school district. We have a lot of ideas. We have a lot of things we want to do, but we always have to look at the bottom line. One of the things I look at, and I am just learning, I'm trying to soak up as much information as I can. And one of the things I look at, when I look at the pie chart of our budget, was that I see that there are more students' school choicing out of our district, which we pay for. Instead of those school choicing in, which would mean we would get revenue in. And I want to look at those reasons. I've asked us if there's any data that says why do people's school choice out, why do people's, uh, school choice in? And if we could kind of flip that, that's gonna help some with budget. So I think looking at different budgets, trying to figure out that is always a concern. I think the fact that we need to really look at what's going on in terms of artificial intelligence and curriculum and that type of thing is going to, it, it's gonna be big. It's, it's, it's out of the bag. We have artificial intelligence. We have to look at being able to utilize that in ways that are morally right. We have to be able, and by that, I mean, you know, there are ethics around using artificial intelligence. And we need to educate our children with that. And I think it's just trying to maybe reestablish with the community a sense of trust, openness. I know that we are working hard, though every one of the candidates want the same thing, no matter where they are in terms of values. I believe that I'm a person who is willing to really listen, learn, and I have a lot of passion. I'm a strong communicator. So I feel that if I could, I want to listen, learn, and then be employed to the community and work together in tandem to create the best school system that we possibly can.
Thank you. Do you support the school library's school committee policy? And also what are your opinions on book banning?
Okay, I actually have a statement on that. We were asked as candidates by the East Hampton City Council to put forth the resolution to give our thoughts on that. I have a full written statement that I would be more than happy to send it anyone. I don't have it right here with me. I am firmly against banning books in any way. I believe that libraries should have open access of all materials. I believe that for First Amendment right, the freedom to, of speech, I believe the freedom to read is included in that. I believe that we should have, I believe that society becomes diminished when we start banning books. It's a slippery slope that I don't think that we should go down. I believe there, there are going to be books in that library that I perhaps do not want in that library. That is not up to me to make the choice of that, of what you read, or you read, or you read. We need to definitely, I am firmly given that. I do have a full written policy about that. And I would be more than happy to share that with anyone. You can reach me at markeprep@gmail.com, M A R K E E P R E P at gmail.com. Say Linda, send me your statement and I would be more than happy to share that with any of you.
I can also have you, when you're complete, type your email into the chat too as well. Let's see. What do you know about current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our districts?
I do have a copy of our strategic plan. Equitable is very important. Equitable means equal. That means that's not, we have not lived with an equitable education and that should always be our goal. I believe that public education, the idea of it, the very beginnings, when you look at our country, of how important public education is, it's what enabled me and my family to rise, but it hasn't been equitable. And it needs to be. In terms of the, that, these are things that I'm learning more about how we can do that. But I know that that's something that we need to be able to provide each child an education that meets their needs. And we need to ensure that, that they have that. I, I, I just think that that's something that we as a community, we have to be able to do as. I mean, as far as getting deeply into a policy, I really can at this time. I'm still learning about that and how, how we can provide that. But I do think that that is certainly something that we need to be doing.
Thank you. Describe one activity, committee or subcommittee you've been involved with within the school or city? And what did it mean to you? And what impact did your work have on the schools or the city?
Okay, I've lived in the, I, in other towns, I was on the library board. I was on the library board, uh, when I lived in, right in Connecticut for a period of time. I have, um, been involved as a teacher on committees and I've been involved, you know, I was a teacher for many years. I've been involved with committees in terms of fundraising committees here. What was the next part of your question, Sean? You still want committees? I'm sorry.
Like, um, so what did it mean to you to be involved on these committees?
I enjoy being, giving back to my community. I enjoy being part of the community. I enjoy being involved in the community. I enjoy the people I meet when you're, when I'm working with people. I like collaborative effort. Do I always love that I, that committee work and take time? No, but it's part of being a collaborative effort. And then what comes out of that can sometimes be so much better than what happens when you're just trying to do it all by yourself. And I passionately believe in East Hampton.
Thank you very much.
I felt like I missed America. I felt like a Miss America contestant. I didn't know when to stop. We don't, but they're not, I, well, peace, it's well, I'm on well, peace.
We can type your email in there. You want to do that real fast? Hi there.
Hello.
Just type it right there.
We'll have you put the mic somewhere on yours here.
That good, we think? All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right, so I got, uh, I have the email address from our last candidate on here. And so we have Laura Scott here and Laura is currently serving on the school committee. She was appointed by the city council, so welcome Laura.
Hello.
And this is our online community here. We have 16 participants right now. So I'm gonna ask you a few questions and, um, what are the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address over the next 21 months? What unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
So the first would be, um, the reopening of a superintendent search. We currently have an interim superintendent. That contract runs through next summer. So we would, the new committee would begin probably as early as January, starting up a new search committee and making those decisions and moving that process forward. Right on the heels of that would be, the budget discussions would begin by January, February and run through the spring. I think advocacy, transparency and clear understanding of not only what our schools need, but what our city is, uh, able to give are important. So that would be the second big thing. Thirdly, I think, um, both from the finance perspective and the policy perspective, both things could be looked at from kind of a bottom-up approach. Reviewing our full policy notebook, um, making any sorts of required revisions, corrections. Uh, and the same with the budget, going back to a zero budget, starting and building it up from scratch, just to get the new committee all on board and understanding all of those responsibilities and all that detail.
Thank you. Uh, we have a new question in the chat and I'm gonna, uh, ask that. What are your thoughts of having school resource officers in the schools?
I, I kind of fail to see the specific need for law enforcement's presence in our schools and our city in that way. What I think a broader question might be, uh, what I hear from a lot of families is the thing they appreciate most about an SRO in a school is a really positive.
the thing they appreciate most about an SRO in a school is a really positive, strong male role model. So I would look at other ways that we could incorporate that kind of support for our students that didn't necessarily have to be a uniformed law enforcement officer.
Okay, great. Um, do you support the school libraries, school committee policy? And what is your feeling on book banning or book censorship?
I'm going to assume that that question is referring to the resolution that the city council just put forward. There were two. One was regarding uh the prevention of any bans in the public library. One was um the prevention of any bans in school libraries. I spoke at their rules meeting in support of both resolutions. I don't support any sort of censorship of material personally in any form. And I went on to say that quite frankly, as the First Amendment goes, as a school committee member, there is no legal vehicle by which I would have the authority to restrict access to any information in a public setting or a public institution.
Thank you. What do you know about current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our districts?
Can you repeat that question?
Uh, what are your current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our district?
Okay. Um, well, I think that's always the goal. I think the challenge is that it's a moving target depending on your current student population. Um, certain, you know, every time a teacher retires or leaves a district, there might have been a specialty or a a little microcosm of the population that they especially served. So those holes always have to be identified and filled and addressed. Um, the question honestly, it lacks a little specificity for me. I think that's the, that's the reason why school committee members need to be open to input from the public. We don't necessarily know first about every issue in the school, so being made aware where there are shortcomings so that we can do whatever is in our purview as school committee members. And then beyond that, what's in my purview is just a parent and a community member to support families who feel like there is something missing, something lacking.
Thank you. And you touched base.
Let me just unmute myself. You touched base earlier about the budget. So describe how the school committee should balance providing a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden.
Um, I will say the challenge was far greater when I served on the school committee in years prior. Back then, year to year, we were seeing, you know, we weren't, we weren't getting level service funding. It was, we were taking cuts every year. We were cutting positions regularly. I'm grateful that we're not in that situation anymore. I think a huge burden has been lifted with having the two newer buildings. I think we have a really well-established faculty and staff. Um, I'm mindful of a handful of vacancies we still have, although it's early in the year. But my, again, this is something that is a moving target. I don't think this is a problem you ever solve and put away. I think this is a problem that reinvents itself every budget season. You identify what is being served well, what is being overlooked, what changes have happened since the last budget was put in place. Um, and you have to be flexible and innovative to address those challenges. Um, I also think, you know, we've had situations where there has been some back and forth with the mayor about what the city may or may not be willing to give versus what the school committee is requesting. And I think, you know, it's, as a school committee member, you're able to see the full city budget, see what the city has on hand and all their revenue streams and make an argument if you believe it's defensible that the city could provide more than they initially offer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, then we're at a minute, um, it's a closing date. So do you want to provide any closing statements?
Um, I mean, nothing springs to my, I just kind of came here primed to answer anybody's questions or concerns. Um, I'm really looking forward, hoping that, you know, um, if I were re-elected, really looking for a chance to hit some of my pet projects once we move through the heavy lifting I addressed earlier. Really strengthening these multi-generational community commitments, re-establishing those bonds with the ECOA, with the public library, with Parks and Rec, looking at offering more services, not just for students, but for their families, for recent graduates, for all of that. So hopefully I'll have the chance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess I come to one up here, right? Oh, God, don't.
I'll put the mic on to your.
I don't mind. I don't know how, but I don't mind. Take care.
Yeah, that's cool.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So this is Linda Broadhurst. I remember you've been a former parent for.
I have, I remember.
Yes.
Mr. Shane as a uh teacher of my children.
All right. Well, it's great. It's great to see you. Thank you for um, for being here today and, and running. Um, so we have like a few questions to, to ask and um some people that are participating through this too, they're providing some questions as well. We only have eight minutes, so we'll get through it. What are the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address over the next twenty-one months? And what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
I think one of the most important is uh we're going to have to do a new superintendent search. And I think um I was on the two thousand and eighteen committee when we hired Dr. Leclerc. And I think we did a pretty good job with that and I um think that that's very important. So I want to make sure that we get a good diverse group of people, some community teachers, students, parents, to be on that committee and um let's get in a superintendent that's going to love East Hampton like we do. And that's like number one, we need that done. Um, some other things that I'm looking forward to or would like to. I want to do things to help with the disabled children. Um, I've worked with children. I mean, my job, I'm in customer service, been for thirty-plus years. So I feel that I'm pretty good at listening and taking in all sides of things before I will make a decision. But I want to, um, I told them last time. All right, superintendent with disability, I want to, I had to go through a lot with my oldest child when it came to special ed. He required an IP and later he needed a five oh four. And I had to advocate and fight for him every step of the way. And I think we need to work with parents and help them because one of the things I think is parents, some parents don't know what is available for their child. And I think we need to help them with that. Let them know what services are available and what we can provide and I want to make sure we're providing it. Because I feel like these children should be succeeding and being all that they can be just alongside everybody else. Um, another thing I was just talking to this last table is I'd like to see some curriculum brought in that's more vocational and life skill type things. Cause I feel like our kids need some basic life skills. You know, when they leave here, not every child's going to choose to go to college. Some might join the military, some may get a dog, some may just do nothing for a little while, but they need to know how to take care of things and how to function in the world outside of this building. And I think that's really important. You know, do things like even uh helping them job resumes, um interviewing, teaching them basic skills, you know, so they can function as an adult once they leave here. Good.
Boy, thank you. I want to unmute myself here. Uh, you, you touched base on um special needs. What do you know about current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our districts?
Equitable for everyone? And I'm not sure what you mean. What do I know? I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, if, like, what would be your plans to provide an equitable education to students in the districts?
Well, I think we have to see what our district holds, see what students we have and curtail it around that. Um, I'd like to see more uh diverse population and offer, you know, I was talking to a gentleman and he said that we aren't doing anything for people of color. And I'm like, what do you mean, we're not doing anything? Like he said, we're not providing what we used to. And that's something I want to look into because I want to understand what he's talking about and I want to make sure that everybody is getting what they need, that all students are treated with respect and get the education that they all deserve, no matter what they bring here.
Thank you.
Um, describe one activity committee or subcommittee you've been involved with within the school or city? What did it mean to you and what impact did your work have on the schools or the city?
Um, a committee that I've done for East Hampton? I, or another city, um, just East Hampton. Well, like I said, I was on the two thousand and eighteen committee to hire the superintendent and it really, you know, opened your eyes to a lot of, a lot of things, a lot of challenges. Um, it was really great. We got together. We all came up with um questions. And I think, you know, you want the questions. You want to find someone that's going to fit, you know, you, you want them to know all that they need to know to be a superintendent and hopefully have it um experience. But you also want them to fit in our, our little niche of East Hampton. Because I think we have a lot of great kids and unique kids here and I would want to make sure that they get, get someone that can work with them and for them. Um, that's the only city committee. I mean, I belong to a religious community and I'm on the Religious Ed Committee. I've been on it for twenty-plus years. I taught Sunday School. I run the childcare there and I've been on the Endowment Committee. So I've been on different committees, but as far as city, the only one I've been on is the, the search.
Great.
So another question I've been asking all the candidates here, what are your thoughts on book bans?
Um, I do not believe in book bans. I don't think any books should be banned. Um, I think they should be available for all students. I do believe that parents do have a right to say something may not be appropriate for their young child. And that's, you know, their family beliefs and I think that should be respected. But as far as banning any books, I don't think, I don't think that's a good thing to do.
And then what are, what's your feeling on having school? Okay, sorry, we're going to be uh switching, but thank you again for.
Thank you, Mr. Shane.
Coming.
On not one, one.
Hello.
You want all my outtakes?
Honestly, the first one was the best.
Really? Okay, great. Okay. My outtakes for you. This is take two.
Yeah, you just started to. If you don't mind, can we put the mic?
Absolutely.
Sure.
See if it will. Is that?
That's a good spot right there.
Oh, that's probably loud. Sorry, everybody. Okay. I'm a little close. Can I back up?
Of course.
Hey, everybody.
All right. Hello, uh, this is Dr. Megan Harvey. She is incumbent on the school committee. And um I've had the pleasure of working with you a few times, especially um, um, different policies within the school district. So it's a pleasure to have you here and I'm going to ask you a few questions. So what are the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address over the next twenty-one months? And then what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
Good question. Um, three things that we have on the horizon. Um, one is a superintendent search. Um, we have an interim superintendent who is wonderful. Um, and whether or not the interim superintendent is going to stay for one year or for two years, that was sort of open when she was hired. Um, but that needs to get addressed and that needs to get addressed immediately so that, you know, we've already talked about it at school committee meetings. Um, and no matter what, the makeup of the committee is changing. So when the new members are sworn in in January, that's the group who really will um decide how that, that process is going to go moving forward. So it will start in January. That's number one. That's, that's coming up, right? Superintendent search. Um, I think it's probably um obvious that there are, there were mistakes made in the last round, the last superintendent search. Um, so that will need to be done really thoughtfully, really transparently, um, with a lot of community input. Um, so that's a really big, and I think that is going to be really important for um a lot of community building and trust building. Um, so, so there's that. Um, and then on the heels of that will come another budget season. Um, and that's, you know, we've had two uh really strong years uh on the budget. I feel one of the things I'm most proud of um in my work in the past couple of years, my work on the budget committee, on the finance committee, um, you know, and two years ago in particular, I'm thinking about sitting in the mayor's office for multiple hours, you know, all day long, multiple days, uh, over and over again, over, over the course of weeks of working with um, the EEA and with um my colleagues and with uh the mayor and with city council and, and just trying to figure out how do we get a budget that does not decrease our, or does not increase our class sizes, that aligns with our values, uh, where we don't lose our valuable educators. Um, I'm really proud that we've been able to do that. We got to keep that going. Because we got to turn this into the streak. We've had a streak of low funding or no funding. Um, but even things like a two percent increase in the budget, that is losing money, right? That's not, we can't keep up with that. So, so that's um on my mind. Um, and then we are entering a time period where we're going to go into contract negotiations. And um, I mean, our educators are everything. Um, and so making sure our educators feel respected and heard and valued and that we come out of that um with momentum to swing forward and, and in a positive place is incredibly important to me. Those are probably the first three things I have on my mind.
Great, thank you.
Was there another part of the question?
Um, what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
Okay. Um, in terms of the superintendent search, that's part of the last one. I have learned a lot. I'm not saying I'm perfect, but I've learned a lot. I have a, a number of things that from the get-go, um, that I will strongly advocate for being different next go around. Uh, in terms of the budget, I've been there too. Um, and I'm excited to keep going with it. So I, I hope I have the opportunity to keep advocating strongly for that. Our chair um of the budget, of the finance committee, um, Mary Goldstein is not running. So the chair of the seat would be open for that committee. Um, and I would certainly be willing to serve in that if the colleagues sort of all agree on that. So that, that's sort of uh a skill set that I am coming in with. Um, and then in terms of the contract negotiations and working with teachers and in the EEA, my philosophy and thoughts about this, I know I've told you this before and, and probably a lot who are um watching online that um, I just, educators are in my family and I respect the heck out of all of you. And when COVID was happening, I, I wanted to advocate for what you all needed and for your safety and for what um, made you comfortable and supported. And, you know, I, I hope that um, I have proved that I will do that over and over again and I would like to continue to do that. So I, I hope, I would hope that my um responsiveness in the, in the past, I won't say even just say two years, I'll say three or four years, has um built a little bit of trust in community. And so I hope that that will help us as we move forward.
Thank you. Uh, so next question. Um, do you support the school library, school committee policy? And then what is your opinion on book bans?
Uh, no book bans. We're not doing it. And so are you referring to the city councils recently? Yes. So I attended that meeting um and um would happily share the link. There's a recording of it, of our statements on both the public library and within the school. And, you know, the bottom line is that uh students. And within the school and, you know, the bottom line is that uh students in our school. Have to be able to have access to all of the material um that a an expert in that field, the librarian. Uh, believe should be there. There's D E requirements, there's uh federal requirements. And then there's uh librarians who work in the schools and our public libraries who have the expertise. And a school committee role in book banning or limiting or age restrictions is. Not legal and not anything I would ever pursue. In fact, I would vehemently vehemently oppose it.
Great. Another question that was asked online are what are your thoughts of having school resource officers in the schools?
This is a really tough one to answer. Um, I have three kids. The thought of them ever not being safe in a school building is. Like, it's devastating. Um. It so it it I would love to just say, oh, here's the thing that keeps kids safe inside of school buildings. And so, yes, let's do this. Um, and I know that there are a lot of split opinions on this, and I'm a research person. I go back to the research. And that's what I I fall back on. I'm looking for evidence. I want an evidence-based decision. So I'm looking at what evidence do we have around SROs? And I wish the answer was that we just put SROs in every building. And it made staff and students safe, but that is not what the evidence shows us over and over again. Um, I have nothing against um police officers or SROs. Um, every experience I've had has been absolutely wonderful. Um, but as we navigate that decision, we have to fall back on the evidence over and over again. That's where we have to go with it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Bye, everybody.
Make sure everybody votes. I I don't think I said this Tuesday, November seventh. Tuesday, November seventh. That's the voting day. So we'll have a few more candidates.
Welcome. Pretty good.
Hi there.
Hi.
Have a seat for us? If you don't mind just putting this on your shirt. Put it anywhere over here, maybe on your backpack.
Yeah, okay.
I think you were teaching in the old building when I first started teaching there. What, when were you there like?
Sixty-seven to seventy-seven.
Oh, okay, then maybe not. Did you come in as like a guest speaker for?
Oh, I I taught three classes there, uh Intro to Criminal Justice.
Okay.
Alex Ellis and I articulated that class for Royal Community.
Yeah.
And the kids got earned a B or better, they got three college credits. So I was in there for three years, quite a bit, actually.
Okay, great.
And they go, what was that, about a cannibal drawing home or something down there?
Right now I teach our forensic course, so.
Oh, all right, great. Well, if you ever need a guest speaker.
Oh, yeah, definitely. All right, so I'm gonna ask you a few questions and a few questions that have been provided online. So what are the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address? Over the next twenty-one months? And then what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them? And this again is Raymond Slitz. He's um running as a new school committee member.
Well, I obviously, one of the first things that's I have to be done is hiring a new superintendent. Is is the I believe the contract of the uh interim superintendent is over on June thirtieth. So that I I imagine will have to be the the priority in order to get someone into that seat. In that context, uh, while having been a chief of police, I do have quite a bit of experience relative to. Hiring processes, background checks, uh, so on and so forth. So I certainly would feel comfortable in participating in. In a search for hiring a uh new superintendent. I also collected would want to look into the existing budget. To see how it's structured and to also see if there's some way of perhaps looking into prioritizing certain needs. Uh, and perhaps either moving funds around, um, taking a look at uh what responsibilities. Various employees have to see if certain jobs can be combined to free up people, uh. Perhaps look at the uh the idea of taking certain responsibilities that might be done by two or three people now and seeing if maybe we can get one to do it. And try to create more flexibility in the budget, uh, as opposed to necessarily asking for a lot more money. What else you?
And then uh what unique perspective or skills would you bring?
Well, I have ten years of teaching experience at at the high school. Uh, I was. Social studies, I was chairman of the department for three years, uh, working system-wide curriculum. Uh, for social studies, purchasing textbooks. I also served as an athletic director, uh, did some coaching and so on. I was also a member of Park and Recreation Commission, um, which is in hiring and. Uh, personnel, worked on budgets and such, so uh that adds to the familiarity along those lines and uh. Of course, having been a department head, I'm very familiar with the city's system of budgeting. Uh, various aspects of the charter. Understand the concept of, you know, warrants and having been signed off with. Making payments and all that kind of stuff. And again, um, I certainly did my share of hiring, so. I think I've I've got a kind of a combination of things that uh going. I have a. Bachelor's degree in history of the minor political science. I have a master's degree in secondary education. And I have a master's degree in uh criminal justice studies.
Do you support the school library's uh? Committee policy? So the city council recently passed a policy. And then what is your stance on book banning?
Well, as far as book banning is concerned, uh, I'm totally against it. As far as the policy, I did read that over and I did have just one concern about it in terms of uh. Availability of this material to, you know, all students. I mean, not every one of us in the library is necessarily going to go in there with their parent. And I think parents should have some input as to what is available for their kids to read. Otherwise, as far as the policy is concerned, I didn't see any problem for it.
And then another um. Question that was provided online are what are your thoughts of having a school resource officer in the schools?
Well, I'm not, we did, while I was chief, we did have a school resource officer. Uh, it was he was primarily at the high school at all times. I am not really particularly sure if there's a need for a full-time officer in a particular school. Having an officer available to the schools upon request. Who has some training uh relative to dealing with. School situations and so on, probably wouldn't be a bad idea. But I I in in this city, I'm not really sure that a full-time. School resource officer is necessary.
Thank you. And then what do you know about current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our districts?
What kind of plans was that?
Providing an equitable education for students in our districts?
In terms of funding?
Um, funding or plans?
Well, yes, I think that um. I think the school committee should take a a really close look at the budget to see how much flexibility there might be in terms of. Bringing up funds, personnel, whatever it is, to deal with established priorities. Uh, I would rather see that done first than to reach out to the taxpayer for more and more money. Uh, especially in this day and age where people are having a tough time uh as far as inflation is concerned. Uh, the the issue with that is that the Educational Reform Act that was passed back in ninety-three, ninety-five. Took most of the powers the school committee had and gave them to the superintendent. So the superintendent makes up the budget. And then presents it to the school committee. And as you know, there's a timeline on getting this all done and getting it to the city council for approval. So the school committee winds up working with a budget kind of backwards. Everything's already been allocated, and I have a short period of time to approve, uh, review and approve. Which makes it tough to work on the budget. So I would think that one of the things I would like to see is to uh direct the superintendent. To uh discuss with the the principals and staff. What the prior the priorities are and try to do some allocation of funds based on priority.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So you're going to two right over here?
Yeah.
How you doing?
Very good to see you.
Yes. If you don't mind just clipping this to your tie?
Sure.
All right, so I'm gonna I'm gonna be here, yeah. All right, so this is Eric Gaiet, and he is a new school committee member. And you had also said that too that you're a teacher. Where do you teach at?
I teach currently in Westfield Ella Intermediate School, and I'm in my sixteenth year as a classroom teacher.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. All right, so what are the one to three most important issues you believe the East Hampton School Committee will need to address? Over the next twenty-one months? And then what unique perspective or skills would you bring to address them?
Um, I think that uh I'm well aware that a budget is a big part of uh the school committee's. Uh, role, and I think that I I also understand that there are many things that must be paid for. There must be transportation. There are. Programs that students uh need with various needs. So I think understanding that that's a reality, but that there are other things that we can hopefully um. Be involved in. Uh, I know that also there's social emotional learning programs in our district. I think getting to understand. All of those programs and looking at ways to make it easier for teachers, maybe by having less on their plates. Um, I know in different grades, there is different programs, so maybe looking at how we can help the teachers streamline. Um, I think my experience helps me because I understand how challenging it is for. For teachers to accomplish their jobs every day. Um, and I think that. I would like for the teachers and the staff in the buildings to. At the very least, understand that we support and trust them. I think that trust is a big part of 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 education. And we have a lot of professionals in the classrooms. That get given things that they have to do. But the truth is, I believe, is that the teachers know what they're doing. And if we give them the right tools, and for example, the social emotional learning. And they know that we trust how they're getting things done, then the students will benefit from that. I think that. Creating a culture with the new superintendent that we're looking for where. They trust and understand that there's a lot more than just kids sitting, reading, doing math. And 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 spitting out data through through testing. I think that there's so much more. And I understand that the teachers sometimes are not able to get to that content because. Of distractions that are larger than the the usual distractions. And so I would want this teachers to know. That um I'm an ally and I will look for ways to help them as best as I can.
Great, thank you. Do you support the school library's uh? The city council policy that was just passed? And uh what is your opinion on book banning?
Okay, um, so uh to keep it as simple as possible, I feel as though anytime you want to ban something, whether it's a book. Or any content, it comes from a place of fear. Um, of fear and often on 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 an ignorance of that content. Um, I know that for me personally, there are plenty of books at the library that I have no interest in reading. But I don't believe that those should be banned because maybe someone else wants to read them. I also know that if there's ever a topic that I don't quite understand, or maybe that I even disagree with. If I read that topic in any way, I. Almost always walk away with some type of knowledge or understanding that I didn't have before. So um just in in simply putting it, I think that uh ban banning books is not going to help anybody. I think banning things in general, if people want that content, if people need that content, it should be readily available for them. And if people don't want that content, they can choose to not engage with that content.
Great, thank you. What are your thoughts of having school resource officers in our schools?
Uh, I know every school that I've worked in, going back to being a student into uh into teaching, that um. I'm I'm familiar with having resource officers. We have a resource officer in my school right now. I think it's uh, it can be very valuable. It can have um, it can have a positive effect as as far as support. I think that there's uh various opinions on this topic, and I think that it would be certainly important to select the right person for that role. A person who um. People can recognize and maybe understand, oh, like any person, you know, if you're unfamiliar with a certain. Person who plays a different role in your community, by being around that, by being, just the same thing with content, by being around that, by seeing that. It often makes you more understanding of it. It gets you to know it. I remember we had an officer, a resource officer, we called him Officer Friendly. I don't believe. That was his real name, but that's what he went by. And when he talked to us in classrooms or saw him, we just got at least. Not even seeing him often, but when you did see him, you you recognized him. So I think by recognizing that. It it can be a helpful asset to a school system.
Great, thank you. Uh, what do you know about current plans to provide an equitable education for students in our districts?
I think that uh I I gave the example in my last uh table that I was just at that. When I first started teaching sixteen years ago, we were given a book called The First Six Weeks of School. And we were told we had six weeks to build community, to get to know kids, for kids to get to know their classmates. Um, to do projects, to get to know other classes. And slowly, I've seen that shrink to teachers often taking a day or two to team build. And then getting right into content. So I would I would love to have an opportunity for us to look at ways where we can give teachers the ability. To spend the time building the communities in their classrooms. Because I think when there's a lack of equity, when there's a lack of understanding, when there's. Whether it's bullying or leaving students out because of various differences, it all stems again from fear of the unknown. And when we allow our our teachers to engage with students and to build community. I think those those problems will shrink because kids will get to know people. In different ways and have an understanding and get to say, oh, I thought this kid was weird. But it turns out I didn't know about this about them, and actually I have the same thing in my family. So I think that. Um, in order for people to have an equitable opportunity. We have to let them grow together and learn from each other, to learn about people's differences. To learn about the people next to them and not just have to say, take out your book and get started on your task.
Okay, great. I.
Nailed it, all right.
Thank you. I was gonna have you do some closing statements, but if you want to do something real fast, you could.
Thanks for being here, everybody who's on this call. Um, I appreciate you. I appreciate your time. And I'd be happy to serve on the school committee, um, if given the opportunity. Thanks so much.
All right, everybody, don't forget to vote Thursday, November seventh. I'm sorry, Tuesday, November seventh. Don't forget to vote.
Thank you.